Good evening.
Hi. Pete, are we ready?
You can go in.
Okay, thank you. Time being seven thirty, notice hereby given that the Franklin zoning board of appeals will come to order. This meeting is being held on a Zoom platform. Uh, this meeting is being recorded and televised. The listener matters to those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for the discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be held via Zoom platform. Please log in at, you can go to the Franklin website, the building department, find the ZBA, get the agenda, the Zoom login is there. You may also join the meeting on your smartphone by calling one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. For those looking to view the meeting, it can be viewed on a rebroadcast tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly what the channels are, but on Comcast and Verizon. Uh, and it'll be on showed rebroadcast on YouTube. Uh, they got a lot of stuff going on tonight. They, I guess they don't have enough channels to, to put everything on, but uh. Anyway, so here we are, seven thirty PM. Eight sixty West Central Street, Cam Alfonso. Applicant is seeking to install a sign that has an electronic LED message center. The building permit is denied without a variance from the ZBA. Uh, filed eight five twenty four. Been advertised and all the appropriate fees have been paid. Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Hi, just tell us who you are, Cam, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'm Cam Alfonso from Signs by Cam Incorporated in Franklin. Um, we were before the board about ten months ago with this project. Um, and the customer had some emergency building repairs and had to put it to the side at the time, for the time being. Anyway, we're back. Um, the last meeting we had, the board, um, virtually, you know, liked everything and everything looked good. The only thing we were missing was a current plot plan. So that has been updated and a new plot plan has been provided. Um, I'll review the sign itself again. Uh, it's a internally illuminated, double sided LED sign structure per the drawing. With the custom barrels as poles, et cetera. Um, everything is wireless technology. It can control the brightness, the timing. Everything, you know, via a mobile app or online software, which is also has code protection from, you know, people breaking in and messing around with it. Um, it's basically the same exact setup as the black box downtown Franklin. This is just a higher quality, newer version of that with higher resolution. Uh, if the board has any questions, feel free to fire away.
You've got the variance criteria that if somebody filled out, you want to just go through that quickly?
Yes, I don't have that in front of me. Unfortunately, I didn't know I needed that.
Yeah. I can ask you the questions, you can try to give us the answers.
Okay.
A little enforcement of the provisions of this zoning bylaw would, uh, involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, uh, appellant for the following reasons.
Well, it doesn't, first of all, allows the customer to advertise for their business. It doesn't impact anybody surrounding neighbors as far as uh, visibility issues, brightness, or, you know, interfering with any traffic flow or any of that kind of nature. So it really doesn't harm, there's no harm done to the, you know, opposing area neighborly.
All right, number two. Uh, B, the hardship is owing to the following circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located for the following reasons.
Yep, there's absolutely zero structural soil, you know, deterioration or separation or even elevation, uh, to this project. Uh, we're staying on the same exact plane as existing conditions. We're just moving it about thirty feet from the old sign location. And we're actually further setback from the road and the current sign is now.
Okay, you're gonna meet the sign setback?
Yes, we're beyond, it'll be on the setback, yes.
Okay. Desirable relief may be granted without either substantial detriment to the public good for the following reasons.
Yeah, again, it doesn't, it doesn't affect and, you know, it doesn't affect the public in any negative way. Uh, it actually helps the owner and people that use the facility for weddings and such to advertise and have functions there as a public, you know, service to people.
Uh, nullifying the substantially degradation, degradating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw for the following reasons.
I'm actually not sure I understand the question.
Nullifying, I said, well, you answered it.
Yeah, I know, but again, this was months ago, honestly, this was ten months ago. I, I didn't have paper, I didn't, I forgot that I had made work, they work with me, I apologize.
Let me ask you this question, question. Do you believe that the sign threatens, uh, the intent or the spirit of the bylaw? And will dramatically, and will dramatically improve the property?
Absolutely. You know, the, the, the tenant has spent millions of dollars renovating this old mill building and intends to, uh, foresee a long future there and provide a nice public service to everyone.
Is he on the call tonight?
I don't believe Pat is, no.
Okay, I was just curious because I, we had something that came up within a butter and he made a comment about how he, I guess, what's he, he's a distiller? He, he, he's got a distillery in there?
Yes, sir.
And he thought that everything was too dangerous going on in there that, uh, you know, might, if somebody moved up front, there was some sort of a problem there, they might be in jeopardy. I just want to make sure that this LED light is not going to throw off any sparks or anything that's going to put off.
No, it's all, uh, no, I understand. First of all, it's low voltage. It's low voltage.
But still makes a spark, still makes a spark, huh?
Well, every electrical component makes a spark, but this is also like, you know, behind, it's like forty feet, fifty feet away from the building across the other side of a water bridge or a waterway. Through a granite, through a granite building. If a spark jumps to that, that would be pretty impressive.
Just throwing that out there because he made the comment last.
Sure, I understand, I understand.
On somebody, on somebody else's petition, you know, so I just wanted to get, I just wanted to get clarification. That he still had those dangerous, uh, or explosive materials in the building.
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, he's just, I mean, he's a distiller. I'm assuming it's all been permitted by law to be there, so I'm not sure.
He's the one that brought it up.
I got you, yeah.
Just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Okay, um, Cam, did you go to this, uh, architectural review board? You know, they're the ones that have, uh, they're the only, this is the only thing that they have control over. Uh, that their vote counts on anything is for signs. Did you go before the, uh?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't told to. I was just told to go before the ZBA.
Okay.
But Gus, that's what Gus, that's what Gus told me to do. So I'm just told, yeah.
Okay, I, you know, that's, they don't have a lot of say in a lot of things and, you know, I think that's one of the things is signs. They have control over signs.
Again, Gus is exactly what Gus told me to do last time we were here and then again this time.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, were there any abutters, uh, for eight sixty West Central Street that want to ask a question or have a comment? I don't see anybody raising their hands. So anyway, all right, I'll go, uh, I'll go around the board and see if there's any questions or comments. Uh, Megan, any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Janelle, any, uh, questions or comments?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay. Have at.
All right, um, is the existing sign saying?
No.
It looked on the, on the plot plan.
Yeah, they, I guess they, they had to show where the original one was, but the new, that's, you can't have two freestanding signs, so that one's completely coming out.
Okay. And then the plan is, I'm, I'm looking at the street view, is to go, um, in front of the old truck?
Uh, it's basically in front of the, between the old truck and the covered bridge.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, my comments are that there aren't, um, there aren't any other digital or lit signs along that stretch of roadway. Um, there are a lot of nice signs along that stretch and, and I think they're done really well. Um, Cam, you've probably made some of them, if not all. And, uh, and I, I think the sign that's there now is quite fitting with the mill. Um, and I, I think, uh, um, what is it? Electronic, uh, LED?
Yep, yep.
Message center? Doesn't seem to be fitting with the character of the, of the mill building and, and even some of the other signage along that stretch and, um, and it could also set a precedent for some of these other properties.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, that's why we, that's why we incorporated the whiskey barrels, and those are real whiskey barrels. Uh, to bring it, to tie it into the mill and the old, oldness of the mill. Um, you know, Pat has now grown the business and he's doing a lot of weddings, a lot of functions, a lot of comedy nights, trivia night, I mean, all kinds of things. Mostly the weddings, um, he really wants to focus on that and he just wants a nice presentation for everyone that's getting married there. Or is having a reception there. Um, quite honestly, I think this would be the nicest sign in Franklin. Um, I've done a lot of work in town for twenty five years. Um, it'll probably be the most iconic and most difficult sign to make, but it's going to be unbelievably beautiful.
Was there, um, was there a consideration for a static message board? You know, something that is like out in front of three. I know that's how they, their events.
Yeah, those, those are very, um, Glen Farmer's a very high end restaurant. Uh, that's not a very high end look. Um, not to mention those things are, I think, absolutely hideous. Um, they're kind of old school from the sixties and seventies. Uh, it's just, times have changed. It's just not, would not look good in front of that building. And present Glen Farmer the way he wants to present.
All right, well, those are my comments, Bruce.
Okay, thank you. Archie.
Uh, so I guess my concern is the size of this thing. If I'm reading your plan correctly, Cam.
Yep.
The, the actual LED sign and this, this does not call out the height because you don't show that dimension on here, but the sign itself is ninety eight inch or ninety six inches, which is eight feet wide.
Right.
By, by six feet high.
Yep, forty eight, fifty.
And then it looks to be six feet off the ground? So you're twelve foot high?
Yes, yes, sir. We're allowed up to twenty, twenty feet high, so we're only going twelve.
So you're gonna have an LED sign that is eight feet wide by six feet in height?
No.
In front of this establishment?
No, the LED part is only the read of the LED board below on the bottom half. So the actual dimensions of the LED board are forty one inches by eighty four inches.
Okay, and do you know that the, the exact height of the, the total height of this sign from?
Twelve, I think it's twelve and a half feet.
The sign count in the barrels?
Yes, the, it's sign actually protrudes past the barrels.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's a big sign. I, I mean, I'm, I'm with Janelle as far as it possibly looking at a place being an LED sign in front of a establishment that, what is it? Would year, I couldn't tell you what year the mill is.
I think eighteen sixty eight, I believe.
Eight, eighteen eighty three, it says, on the bridge.
Yeah.
Um, um, I just think it's kind of big. What can we do to, to make that small?
Well, the, in scale with the barrels, which he wants to use. And the only size LED, they only make LED boards certain sizes. And he wants to maximize the square footage he's allowed. So I really can't do anything to change it. I mean, it's, it's the same, it's actually, the LED part's the same size as the one downtown. And this is on a dead end street, so I'm not sure what the, why the board's upset about putting a sign like this, excuse me, on what used to be one forty, but now it's a dead end. Um, I'm not sure why they let the one downtown happen, but not this one happen. I don't, I don't understand the reasoning.
If you think about it, you'll, you'll understand why.
Okay.
And, and you gotta remember that was the first LED sign that we approved in town.
Right, right.
Which we may have made a couple of mistakes on it, but we won't, we won't make them again.
I understand.
Go ahead, Archie, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, what, what's the next size down? I mean, he may not want it, but we may not allow him to have this size sign. So what, what, what's the alternative?
Well, to be able to do what he wants to do with the text and lettering and size, I really don't know if he can go smaller. I mean, the next size down would probably be like a two by six or something. But that would be tiny and you wouldn't be able to do much with it.
Hey, man, I said my piece.
Okay. Uh, Cam, the, the sign is a message board. How, uh, how many messages you plan to, uh, put on the board?
Well, again, that's, we can set some stipulations. I mean, it's not going to be like the one downtown changing every thirty seconds.
Right, I agree with you a hundred percent. That was one of the problems. That was, listen, I actually, I actually, yeah. I actually got the decision for that sign today because I was part of the people that approved it and I never expected that the sign was going to change, to be honest with you. What we were dealing with was an interior lit sign. And you've been doing signs for a long time in town and the town frowned upon interior lit signs. Now, somebody who, somebody like me who's visually challenged likes an interior lit sign. As opposed to having a couple on sixty watt bulbs shining on it, you know?
Yeah.
And trying to read it while you're going down the road.
Right.
Now, that particular sign got up and they started rattling off what was coming up and what was going down and everything else. So it, it's my intention to put a restriction on how many times you can change this sign.
Totally, totally understand, and that's, and that's what we tried.
I gotta tell you that, that I'm coming up because you're not really, you're not doing things that are, uh, first of all, you don't have a, a bunch of traffic going by. You got traffic going by, but it's a dead end street. Wherever they go one way, they're going to come back the other way. So whatever they miss going down, they might see on the way back. But my idea was to leave it for, it's, it's sixty minutes. You know, you can't change it for sixty minutes.
Oh, that's fine. Again, and he's not, he's not, that's not what the purpose and intent is. So let me explain. Let me give you an example. Joe, Joe and Susan are getting married. They're having their reception there. The sign will have a picture of them, the happy couple, and say, welcome, you know, happy wedding or congratulations, Julie, whatever. That's the kind of thing he's going to promote it. He's not going to be flashing up, come in, buy a hot dog, come in. It's not what they do there. The, the point is, it's, he's trying to represent what they are and what they've, you know, trying to do there. It's an upscale restaurant, we're in a function hall. So that's what they're trying to keep it as. So they're not going to be, if you want to set restrictions, one an hour, it's not going to have flashing yellow lights. It's not going to say, you know, buy now. That's not the intent of the sign. It's to, to, mostly for weddings, also to say, hey, we have trivia night Tuesday, March fifth, come join us. It's not, he's not selling bottles of, like, it's not a retail store. It's, it's not that kind of thing. Uh, he's just more looking to make it a nice location for people to have weddings, et cetera.
Chair, can I ask a follow up question then?
Sure.
Is, is the intent for it to be seen from one forty? So is it a wayfinding thing? Like, people can't find the mill?
It's pretty far back from one forty. I mean, at night, at night, you probably, well, you'd see that night because it's going to be an LED board. Um, yeah, I mean, it's probably, now that I think about it, you'll probably see it. I don't, honestly, the line of sight, I'm not really sure about, because I think there's a brick building, the gas station. I think it's a clear shot to the, to the, to the actual intersection. I'm pretty sure it is, but I haven't put my eyes on in a while.
Okay.
I'm not sure that somebody riding on one forty would be able to read down, look down the street and read what it says.
I know, but I, I wondered if that's why the intent for it to be so big and to, to be for wedding guests. I mean, you.
Well, let's, let's narrow it down to, let's narrow it down to another. He's allowed sixty square feet, correct?
Right. Yes.
He's allowed up to sixty square feet on a sign.
Right, he's going forty eight.
Yeah, he's at forty eight. The only difference, what we're giving relief from here is the LED lighting.
Correct.
It's an interior lit LED light. He's agreed that they're not going to change the thing at least for an hour or sixty minutes if they're going to change the message on it.
Right.
And there's not going to be any flashing lights on it, on, at any time.
Right, and we can even shut, we can even shut it off at night, like after midnight or what, I mean, it's not, we're not, he's, we're not trying to upset the town. We're not trying to pull one on with the town. We're just trying to do a nice job for a sign. So we want to set parameters, that's not a problem. You can do one, every, a message every hour, that's fine. You can shut it off at midnight till, you know, nine in the morning. You know, that's not a problem. It's not going to be like the one downtown where it's going to be flashing every ten seconds in bright, ugly colors and just, you know.
No, I know.
Not the intention here, not the intention at all.
Yeah. And if that was a concern, Janelle, that's, you gotta remember that was the, the one uptown was the first one we ever did, an LED sign. I don't think we've done any more since then, to be honest with you. I think this is probably the second one.
Yeah, the high school has one.
There's some others in town, but one's down by the school. School's exempt from zoning, so they can do whatever they want. I think there's an LED clock upon Rockland Trust.
Yep.
I'm not sure that says anything other than the time of day.
Time and time.
Yeah, okay, uh, so, you know, and, and that's nowhere near what, what would be allowed. You know, as far as, you know, other than the LED lights on the inside, but you know, people who go uptown usually concerned about what the temperature is and what time it is, so they know what time they gotta get into the back of the post office, but uh, I don't find that obtrusive anyway, but, uh, and other than that, I'm not sure. Cam had a packet before, thought that was going to sway us somehow because there's other signs around, but uh, not, probably not knowing why they're there and how they got there.
Exactly.
Would, yeah, would be the problem, but.
Now, my, um, I, I'm it's curious that this doesn't have to, if it comes to us, then it doesn't, does it have, still not have to go to the design review?
No, he's got to go to, he's got to go to design review. I think that's a, you go, every other sign, you go to the design review, right, Cam?
I go, I go as, out of respect and I don't, technically, I don't have to go to designer view, but I will anyway, because I always do.
I wish Gus was around tonight because I'm pretty sure that, uh, I'm pretty sure that's the only thing that they have any jurisdiction over is signs.
Yeah, the last variance I got for a sign appear, yeah, they, I, I mean, I already, I already know Sam Williams very well. He's already seen the drawing. He loves it. Uh, I, you know, as a courtesy, I'll certainly go, but as I did the last variance for a sign for La Quinta Winery, again, Gus, like, no, you don't, once you get approved from ZBA, you don't have to go to designer view. But again, I can certainly go, not a problem.
Okay. We can make it a contingent, Janelle, that he goes before he gets permit.
Okay. Now, my, my concern is mostly a, a lot with precedent, right? There's a, there's a stretch of roadway. I, I know that it's similar and it's near my in-laws' house and we, we call it the strip, right? Because it's just every place has different competing signs and so, they're mostly static, but there's just, there's all of them in a row. And seeing, you know, this, this stretch, um, while it is a dead end, it is, you know, people, people drive it and it's, this is a, this is a really classy place. It's an amazing restaurant and I, I feel just surprised that the owner feels the need to have a sign to draw people to it and attract events. That's all. I was, I was pretty surprised by the, um, desire for it. A big, a big LED sign.
Well, like I said, it's forty eight square feet as opposed to sixty, so he didn't, he didn't go to the max.
Right.
And if we limit him to just, uh, one message every sixty minutes with no flashing, no, uh, you know, nothing else in there. You know, he'd have to think about what he's going to put on there and leave it on there for sixty minutes. If he's saying, you know, John and Mary are getting married, he might have to wait sixty minutes to come back and give them the date, give people the date so that, so they know when to come.
No, it's, it's more like welcoming the people from the guests on that aspect. And again, to advertise trivia night. They do trivia nights there and comedy nights and, you know, it's a nice public place. I mean,
Yeah.
Put a lot of money into it. And thank God, and he opened, he opened during COVID. The first week of COVID, when they had the shutdown, he tried to open and they shut everything down. So God bless the man for four years. There he is.
Yeah. Well, he didn't have much choice. He bought the property, so he had to do something.
It's a beautiful building. I've, I've toured it. I've seen it at all stages. It's absolutely beautiful.
Yeah. Anyway, there was no abutters. Uh, any other questions from the board? Hearing none. If everybody's comfortable, I'll, uh, I'll entertain and close the public hearing. And, uh, just for Janelle, when we do that, means we can't take any more information later. But we are, we can put a stipulation in that before he gets a building permit, he gets an approval from the architectural review board or sign committee or whatever they call them today, but.
Design review.
Design review. Design review, design review, yeah, okay.
No problem.
Anyway, with all that being said, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Motion made and.
Seconded.
Janelle, I think Janelle's got to do it.
Seconded.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Any one last thing anybody want to say before we close the public hearing? I guess not. All right, vote will come on, uh, uh, close the public hearing. Roll call vote. Uh, Janelle?
Uh, no.
You don't want to close the public hearing?
Oh, took, yes, we'll close the public hearing. Yes.
I'll have to, I can, that might be a sign of things to come.
Yes.
Okay, uh, chair votes, yes. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, but I'm going to need help probably with the contingencies.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, grant the variance for eight sixty West Central Street, uh, for Glen Farmer Distillery to construct a sign. Uh, uh, an LED sign as shown on a drawing dated seven nine twenty four entitled, uh, Plan Showing Proposed Sign, number five sixty, number eight sixty two, West Central Street, Franklin, Mass. By O'Brien Land Survey with the contingency that the, uh, Cam Alfonso uh, go to the design review board to show and provide the same drawings that he's provided here and get approval from them to allow the sign. And that the messaging on this sign is limited to one message per, uh, every sixty minutes.
And, and no flashing lights?
With no flashing lights and sirens.
It's got no sound.
Yeah. Okay, I guess, uh, I guess that covers it. Was there anything else? We got the contingency about going to design review every sixty minutes and, uh, uh, no more than forty eight square feet as shown in the drawing. Motion made.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay, hang on. We haven't done anything yet.
Yep, sorry, sorry.
Okay, I'll second it for, for, for discussion. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Go ahead, Janelle.
Uh, no, I don't support it.
Okay, but I mean, you know, you don't, you probably just should say why in case he decides to appeal it.
Yeah, um, I think it is, uh, uh, too large. Um, and I don't think it's the right location for an LED sign. Um, it, that it's going to be a hardship for this business to not have that sign doesn't feel in line with, um, the kind of business that it is, um, in my opinion.
Okay.
And, and I worry that it sets a precedent for the other properties along that stretch.
You know, people say that, but we really don't. We take each, uh, application on its own merit. People can say that if somebody came up across the street, we, we approve this one and deny the next one. There's nothing they can do. It's denied. You know, just like this one maybe, but and somebody could come up with one across the street and we could approve that one. You know, there's no, we don't set precedent with anything. At least that's what I've been told. I don't think we've ever lost an appeal over precedent, so I know what you're saying, but. You know.
Yeah.
We approved the one uptown back in the day. That was in two thousand. I've looked it up today. I think it was two thousand fifteen and so it was almost ten years ago. Uh, there was, there was some controversy with it when it first came out because they changed the. They changed the message board too often, like every ten seconds or something. I don't know what they're doing now. I know Gus had a couple of discussions with him. You know, he's the zoning enforcement officer. It's really not up to us. We put the parameters on it. If he wants to get out there and sit there. And watch the sign until it changes again, that's his, his prerogative. And if they change it in fifty nine minutes instead of sixty, then. They're in a zoning violation and they, they could get a three hundred dollar a day fine in each day constitutes another fine, but. Anyway, with all that being said, Archie, any comments, questions?
No, I'm all set.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Uh, the motion's been made. Roll call vote. Uh, Archie.
Yes.
Janelle.
No.
Uh, chair votes, yes. Okay, uh, motion fails camp, so. Maybe you ought to go to the design review and try it again.
I'm sorry, my, my understanding, I'm sorry, what?
Uh, you have to get three votes in the affirmative. You only got two. So it's basically denied. It's not a majority vote. We don't, we don't work as a majority vote. We work as a unanimous vote. You have to have three votes in the affirmative to get something approved. It was one, one person, one, one vote was no. So that's it. Now, I don't know if she'd have a, a, a different feel for it if you went to the design review and then came back and they said they loved it. But, you know, that's, that's the chance that everybody takes.
So I guess, I guess the, I'm sorry, I'm, I, I just make sure I understand. So if design review approves it?
Well, they have to approve it anyway. I'm not saying, you know, she brought that up, you know, maybe if you go to design review, maybe uh, you know, and I brought. I, I'm the one who really brought it up. Maybe if you go to design review and they come back and they say they love it. Maybe uh, she'll have an outstanding view on, you know, I don't know, but, you know, people have their opinions and that's why everybody gets a vote.
Okay, I'm just confused cuz, you know, again, last, last time I was before the board on, with the subject. Everybody seemed to be on board and the only thing was missing was a, a plot plan. And we had a continuance, but they had some emergency building.
Yeah, you withdrew.
Issues. Yeah, we, yeah, we had it withdrawn cuz we couldn't continue with the project cuz he had funding, funding issue.
Yeah.
So now. I'm deny.
Yes.
Interesting.
So can I? Can we get some guidance as to maybe what we would like to see there? And, in hopes i- if he wants to come back with a different design?
Yeah, listen, you know, that, he may not come back. The owner may not wanna come back. You know what I mean? I, I. You know, there's no guarantee that if Janelle tells him she likes something today, that she might not like it the next day. I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'm not saying that that's the way she's gonna vote, but. You know, if you wanna. Chime in, Janelle, and say what you, what you, you know, like to approve as opposed to what was presented and maybe they'll come back. Maybe they won't. You don't have to, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, I, I think I made it somewhat clear that um. The, the building is a signature building in Franklin. Right? It's, it sort of speaks for itself. When you come upon it, you think, wow, what's that? Um, having a large sign that is. LED lit. Uh, in my opinion, takes away from that property. And sets a precedent for the rest of the street. Uh, those were two things against the proposal. For me, um, so if some, if something came back that was. Uh, more in fitting with the character of the property. That. That wasn't LED. Uh, uh, love to reconsider.
Yeah, I, I mean, that. I could tell you right now, that's, this is what he wants. So that's the way he's been striving for and saving for, so. Uh. I have to say, I'm quite shocked. I'm quite shocked.
Okay, well, we gotta move on, Cam, sorry.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. Next thing on the agenda is approval of the August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four meeting minutes. Uh, members have been provided with a copy, uh, you know, electronically or, or in the packet and uh. Yeah, I had a chance to read it. I'll give you a chance. I want you to read it. I'll entertain a motion. Megan, you could probably vote on this one because you were here and I don't think Archie was here for the last meeting.
Yeah, I was not here.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I read those some, some, some moved.
You already read them?
I, I did, yes.
Okay, you making a motion to approve?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve. Is, is there a second?
Um, I. Haven't read them. I don't know, Casey, did uh, you drop them off or send them to me?
It was in the email from Wednesday or Tuesday.
Okay. Oh, there they are. All right, I'll do a quick read.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Uh, you look good, seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty four meeting minutes. Uh, say yes, roll call vote. Megan.
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Uh, because we got a new member on and we should have done it back in June, but we couldn't do it then because we didn't, the, the new members weren't ratified. Uh, we gotta do a reorganization. I'll entertain a motion for chair.
I'd second it. Or make that motion to, for Bruce Sun tried to be chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to make me the chair. Uh, I appreciate the thought. Uh, all those in favor, roll call vote. Archie.
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Uh, chair votes, yes. I'll entertain, uh, that we make uh, Archie Asavito, the Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion for Archie to be the Vice Chair.
Okay, I'll second it then. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, roll call vote, Archie.
Aye. Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we uh. Make Janelle Lang the Secretary.
Uh, second that?
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, um, roll call vote. Chair votes, yes. Archie.
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Janelle, that means that when we get down to the agenda, when I, after I open the meeting, you gotta read those things off.
Okay.
It's a big job, Janelle.
Big job, big job. All right, now, uh, now, uh, Casey can get the uh, paperwork correct now and have the right correct names and everything on it, so. Who everybody is. But anyway, all right, our next meeting is September twenty sixth, right, Casey?
Yes.
Right now, we have one thing on the agenda.
Correct.
And we don't have any time to get anything else on, correct?
No.
Uh, this is, gets better and better all the time. But anything, any, anything else to come before the board? Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. I moved to adjourn?
Yeah, no, motion made and seconded. Yeah, motion made and seconded, non debatable. All those in favor, roll call vote, Janelle.
Yes.
Archie.
Yes.
Uh, chair votes, yes. Good night, everyone. Thanks for participating. Yeah.
All right, good night.
Yeah, good night.